Okay, I'm just checking whether we're always on or always off here, folks. Well, welcome, everybody. I'd like to call this council committee the whole meeting for February six twenty twenty three to order. And we have actually a pretty full agenda tonight. With council's indulgence, I would like to to reverse our discussion items so we can devote the majority of our time to item B ordinance twenty three twelve sixty three, creating a new chapter twelve fifty four of Lake Forest Park Municipal Code Code Retaining Walls. Does anyone have any objections? Okay, and with that, we'll start off with citizen comments. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment at this time? Podium is available to you if you would like. Three minutes, please, and Mr. Stedden, please. Three seconds. We'll go the other way.
Oh, sorry about that. They're taken, you know, in other locations, and you have a map, so you can see where all this is. And the other thing is, we've been sort of because we don't have our own noise ordinance, we're relying on sound transit to implement or washed out to implement the FHWA noise analysis. And this apparently comes into play when one, you have substantial vertical alteration, a project that removes shielding, therefore exposing line of sight between the receptor than traffic noise source. This is done by either altering the vertical alignment of the highway or by altering the topography between the highway noise, traffic noise, and the source of the receptor. And then there's another one. The next one is a point that I think we also fall into is the addition of a through traffic lane. This includes the addition of a through bus or through traffic lane that functions as a high capacity vehicle lane, high occupancy lane, toll lane, bus lane, or truck climbing lane. And then the third one is restriping existing pavement for the purpose of adding a thoroughfare traffic lane or an auxiliary lane. So I think for those reasons alone, we have, we belong in the FHWA noise compliance zone, and that's been ignored. When you actually look at the study, so I sent it to you by email, and I realized it was hard to read in an email, so I made it into a PDF and sent it again. Sorry for the duplication, but also gave you a handout. And you can see where things are taken. For example, along Botha Way, the only thing that's really taken this way down, you can barely read this thing, but it's around one hundred and fiftieth. Is there? Yeah, one hundred and fiftieth Street is where they took it on Botha Way. Not in the residential area. When they took it on thirty ninth, they took it actually at a really almost a block away behind the houses at one sixty two something. So again, it's not a true reading of where this is happening. And even the one that was on Botha Way, it was taken from behind the building. So there's a lot of weird stuff in this noise study in terms of how they actually got their numbers. And I would like you to, there's like ninety five pages, but only seven really relate to us. And those are the seven I would like you to study. Because you will see that the noise study that was done was very flawed, and that we deserve better is what it gets down to. Our community deserves better. And this project feels to me like it's really being rushed without a lot of careful thought. It could be done well. I support the BRT, but I also support good design. I support thoughtful design. I support critical thinking. And I think all of you do too. And it's the time that we start applying this to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. You're forgetting these were not automatic. Go on. Paula, good. Welcome.
Hi again. I am too. I've also read that study, and I've also contacted three separate noise and vibration companies to get my own analysis done because I my property is a little bit different because I have the trifecta of soft slope. And it's moving very close to me, et cetera. And they all have agreed that vibration coming from the roadway does affect slip. It does affect all of those things. And to say that there is because of there's no noise ordinance, they don't have to follow a certain code. That's what that study says. And I find that very troubling because we're going to be affected, even though we don't have a noise ordinance, it's very easy to implement a noise ordinance. There's a lot of, a lot of local cities have the same noise ordinance, for example, as Seattle. It's a very, it's a very concrete noise ordinance. It could be mandated very quickly before, since this study doesn't appear to be valid, since it's going on, it's for expanding to the east. It's very possible that it could be implemented before they have to redo something for going on the west. And as far as the DB levels at my place, I have a DB because, you know, I have to worry about noise. The decibel levels inside my building in with, you know, just like yesterday I was recording, I was at seventy two decibels as traffic was going by. So that's already high. And there is no, there is no noise steady by my property. And my property can be affected like anybody else's that's close to the slope by vibration when they move the road closer. So I also support transit, but I also support, as Vicky says, good design. And good design does not put these properties in jeopardy because where is the benchmark? Do I have to get a benchmark of my property in order to prove to sound transit that I might have a problem? So those are my concerns, and I think that a full-on study for moving things to the west side should be performed just for the safety of the community. Because I also feel that things are rushed. And if they're rushing this particular piece, they could be rushing other things, and that could have serious impact to the residents. So that's why, yes, they are in a hurry, but they're also being a little bit careless, maybe not intentionally, but maybe, you know, it was COVID. They're, 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 everybody's separated by COVID protocol, and people can't get together and do good design. So that's what I'm for is to have something good. So the project will be successful. Thanks.
Hi, I'm John Drew, a ten-year resident of Lake Forest Park. I'm at one six one three six forty first Avenue Northeast. And I'm here to comment about the retaining wall ordinance, which I wholeheartedly support, and I appreciate your efforts to move it through the process. But I feel that I have a to make a small request for what I think is a modest modification to the ordinance. And that is that I feel that the design guidelines should include mitigation for noise pollution that might result from the use of highly reflective retaining wall materials. In situations where developers propose to construct tall, long retaining walls at the cost of removing trees, vegetation, and other naturally sound absorbing materials, the guideline should simply ensure that sound absorbing materials, treatments, or vegetation be incorporated into the design of the retaining wall. Some visual design features already in the ordinance, such as landscaping and vegetation, support sound absorption, but noise mitigation is not specifically called out. In lieu of any mitigation, developers should present evidence that proposed retaining wall constructions will not produce additional significant reflective noise pollution. In closing, I hope we can negotiate a more lightweight five twenty two BRT design that doesn't sacrifice so many of our trees for tall concrete walls with etchings of trees. Thank you.
Sorry. We had automatic ones last week and or the week before, and we're shifting because we're in a more personal setting, apparently. Anyone else would like to make public comment at this time? Please. Scott?
Sorry, I wasn't going to speak, but I my name is Scott Messick, Lake Forest Park resident. I hundred percent, you know, I think that ordinance is is great. I appreciate you guys going through with that. I guess my only, my only concern is I feel like we're adopting it after the fact and then changing the rules. And I want to make sure that how we do it and how we implement it isn't going to be something that sound transit sees as I don't know, in in kind of a stop sound transit viewpoint. I don't know how you do that, but that is my concern is how it would be viewed as a sound transit. So. Scott, thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else? We covered everywhere. This is Mr. Mayor, this is the second time we've had a more than one person in the council chambers. Thanks, everybody for coming. Okay, let's move on with, we're going to move, start with item B in reverse order here. So ordinance twenty three twelve sixty three, creating a new chapter twelve dot fifty of Lake Forest Park Municipal Code Retaining Walls. And I wanted to start out by thanking Mr. Bennett and our legal team, Ms. Pratt as well on her staff for making a very, very quick turnaround on this. Steve, this is outstanding work. Thank you very much for that.
So should we walk through the changes since the last version that was your your January twenty sixth meeting? We based on the comments from from council members, we made a few changes to both the regulations and the design guidelines and the this current draft is up on the screen for anyone who doesn't have it before them. But so going right to the first change since the previous draft, that would be section one of the ordinance. And the the changes here were designed to address two sort of themes that were running through the comments. Number one being that the 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 draft, initial draft language was providing some more flexibility with the type of wall that would be allowed than council members seem to be comfortable with. So we've really restricted it to just a a concrete construction or engineering block, I think is the other term that's still here. But so we've taken out the ability to use timber or concrete laggings. And and the other thing that's tried to address here was the discussion, there wasn't really anything that addressed sort of does, you know, does, does the construction, is it continuous? Does it, is there some point at which construction could change lower or higher? And and so instead of getting into maximum minimum heights, the attempt here is to just say that the whole thing has to be of the same construction type. And then so so and if it is tiered, that the that also all has to be the same type of construction. And thereby hopefully make that clear. And so, you know, there, there probably is some still some work to be could be done on on defining exactly what is an independent wall segment. But, you know, worst case, we could define that term just to to make it clear if we don't come up with a better term. The next change.
Steve, could I interrupt you? Pardon me. And colleagues, I was remiss in not checking in on how you would like to approach this. We can approach it on a change by change basis and then come back to more thematic changes that you're looking for, or what's what's your pleasure? How would you like to approach this?
I think as a whole, I meant design guidelines as a whole, would be useful for me.
Okay, any other thoughts? Does that work for me?
That works.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. My apologies.
The next change in section three was just a wording change suggested by the city attorney. So I did not include an explanatory note there. And in section four, the draft design guidelines, the new version of it makes landscaping mandatory. It was an alternative under the previous draft. So now this language in four just parallels that, making it clear in the ordinance that the retaining, that landscaping treatments would be required. And would also have to be approved by the Public Works Director. Then in section five, which is a new new five, section four is a new section, section five has moved down to address some some sort of, you, we didn't really have anything in here that that sort of dealt with those unforeseen circumstances or unique circumstances that come up as a project comes to, you know, you get farther and farther along with design. So in a lot of our regulations, we have the ability for the the administrator of the regulations to set conditions. And so we just put in a couple of typical conditions, especially when you're dealing with landscaping, understood from the discussions, we wanted the council was concerned about having permanent irrigation. So we're limiting this to temporary irrigation and then some sort of performance plan implementation of three years. And, you know, there were some discussion about is that typical for 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 plantings? It is kind of, that's, that's some of our other regulations. A three-year plan is typical. When it comes to monitoring plans, like when we're dealing with critical areas, those are typically five-year plans. But that's, that's because you're trying to fight invasives and things like that. So this is, you know, just a starting place for for that discussion. And we certainly can talk about it more. So those are the suggested changes to the the ordinance. Do you want to stop there and talk about them? Okay.
Thank you. Couple of comments in item one with the rockeries and timber and concrete laggings. Would that language preclude us from using any of the green wall systems that are set up similar to similar in that kind of wall construction type?
I don't think in that section the 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 guidelines, I think, talk about an actual type of wall. So so the question would be, how how would you meet the first guy, first provision that will have artistic images, you know, et cetera, et cetera, northwest theme with with just a green wall. So so, you know, it's, it's kind of in guideline language. So that, you know, you, we could, when we get to the guidelines, maybe that's where you see if there's, you know, flexibility enough to allow that and still do. But but I think if you were just look at this document, you'd say, well, they're looking for a concrete wall, whatever, whether it's precast or cast in place. You know, that that's what the city seems to be saying. So so, you know, I think that's, that's an area where, you know, you, we could, you know, you could set up an alternative like we have before with with landscaping and or, you know, but that's at this point, it's not really envisioned the way this is set up.
I think that's doing a disservice to our community. I think some of those green walls are phenomenal and beautiful, and some of them incorporate soil, so they're not a harsh sound reflecting concrete. And so I think that there's some really great benefits to them. There's obviously cost implications, things of that nature. But I just want to make sure that this this implies, as you said, that we have to have concrete first. And I just want to make sure that there is an opportunity for us to have those other systems involved in here. And then I think the only other comment I want to bring up at this moment is considering adding five-year monitoring for the trees. The trees are really hard to get established with our incredibly hot summers lately. I think we want a longer establishment period for those, a longer irrigation period, if possible.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Bennett, so much for all the work on this. So I actually have a question for my colleague, and then we'll so the green walls that I've looked at looked, looked like they have some terracing in them, that they're concrete that that then incorporates soil, you know, in in sort of sections as they go up. I'm so I'm curious if you're see, if you're reading this first section as not allowing that. I get it. Okay.
Yeah, because I think that the the sense of laggings is how they're they're structured. They're they're lagging that dirt wall back with the structure rather than building a a barrier structure. And and so and it doesn't specifically discount it, but I would read this and not propose it because I would feel like it would not allow it.
Okay, so I was wondering if tiered is, you see, I don't really know what lagging means. That's part of my problem. So is tiered something different?
I think because maybe, can you clarify what your thought was with laggings? And maybe that's could help us understand a little better because my thought was it's it's not a solid structure. So when you have small incremental pieces, you usually have to lag them back and structurally give them strength through the the soil behind it. Is that what you're thinking?
I guess my image of lagging is what we looked at was that, you know, there are these concrete or you know, I-beam type of supports that are put in the ground and then wall is slotted in between them. But you know, I don't know if those always have to be lagged back or but we look at the, we looked at a picture of something that, I guess it was from one public work staff was showing me what they were thinking about for a lag wood lag wall that was going to be associated with the traffic circle. And that's what it looked like. It was, it was being, you know, columns, you know, pounded in the ground and then words between them.
Where some of the green walls that I have seen were terraced so that they stepped back and plantings were in the each step and grew up from each step. So but that seems like that would be allowed here because you allow terracing, right? You actually call out.
That may be another word we could add that would create some flexibility. We're just saying that terrorist or tiered tiered really meant that they were going to, to me, that meant they were going to do it in two sections or something like that. So so up here is one wall just, but I don't know that, you know, so it doesn't always allow for that in some cases. So so you so you could, but you know, you could just expand that with that type of language in that section to possibly allow something that is more in keeping with a green wall.
Okay. Well, maybe we can work on that a little bit. And and then the other question I had in the irrigation section, you talk about funding. And so is the idea that the funding would come to the city and the city would be responsible for monitoring the the actual function of the irrigation and make sure it keeps working throughout the year? The three years?
The the way that it's handled usually is it's not necessarily that the city is is doing that monitoring, but the city has some sort of security that if for some reason that monitoring stops, the city could 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 then step in and and do it. We'd have the funds available to do it. So so that that's kind of what I was thinking about. There are some technical technical issues. And so this is why you know, the language is kind of broad related to public agencies. You can't require public agencies to bond. So but what we, you know, we, we have, you know, already, we're, you know, setting up deposits. And so the other option is a what we call a not not a fee in lieu of but a basically a bank account that's the applicant and the city is named on. And we give that back once the period's over.
Okay, that's great. And and if I can just ask one more question. Okay. So I am interested in the noise issue and how we work that into our our ordinance here. And I I just don't know that we know enough about what it takes to mitigate noise to really prescribe at this point, but how about you? Do you know how we might incorporate it into the ordinance?
Well, well, you know, took a stab at that in the guideline section that that at least should be discussed, and we could talk about that a little bit more. But we have, we have to remember that what we're trying to do. I like the language that the gentleman said the there were doesn't produce any significant additional noise as we're we're talking about a project that's coming into an existing environment where there already are existing impacts that that you can't hold an applicant to fixing. So.
Well, let's talk about that when we get to the guidelines. Thank you.
Yeah, um, thank you. I appreciate that you've taken the council's feedback on board from the previous meeting, and I appreciate that you're prioritizing vegetation. I did want to ask about section four. Do you see, could you foresee a situation where there's a section of a wall that just for some reason cannot have any vegetation? It's it's too inaccessible, that sort of thing. And if that is the case, would this section be too prescriptive and that it would effectively forbid the wall that they have to build?
I think that the idea, the way that this is set up is to say that the Public Works Director, you know, if the what's presented is in keeping with the design guidelines, the Public Works Director can approve it. So so you're immediately sent to the design guidelines. And so that's where kind of you have the flexibility to 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 work with the situation that the applicant finds themselves in. And and so that's another reason, I think, you know, when we look, when we look at that section, we need to also look at that provision two. And there's some some example language there that I, you know, that is kind of things you put in design guidelines, but you know, is kind of things you put in design guidelines, but you know, I don't know if it's necessarily what you want, but that's really where the rubber hits the road is is how is that a should or a shall? You know, that that like we talked about when we were doing the town center design guidelines. You that that's where you have your ability to dial it up or down.
Thanks. Uh, yes, please, Mr. Frattoni.
Thanks, AP Mayor. Um, and thanks, Steve, again, for your great report. Um, the I had asked a question last time about the height. So um, I noticed there's no language in that there's so there's some commonly understood, what is the minimum height that this was ordinance would cover?
Yeah, that's, um, I you know, didn't really think that I thought it'd be harder to agree on, you know, when this is triggered via height, more so in terms of you know, the the nature of the project. This is a retaining wall in a uh, a right of way, but that's that's kind of, you know, where this is happening. And so if you're gonna you want to propose a new retaining wall for the city or another agency, then uh, regardless of how high it is, it has to meet these standards. So that's why I I thought it was just too uh, difficult to establish that minimum or maximum height, because you don't really know what you're uh, if you set a maximum height, uh, then are you, you know, precluding something that you're, you know, that the city wants to do because it went six inches over that. So uh, that that was my thinking about it in that first change.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Frattoni. Mr. Lebo.
Uh, thank you. Um, it might be worthwhile looking at like, for example, wash dot standards. I do believe that they have a three-year plan establishment as a typical requirement for wash dot right away or landscape. So I would ask that we do consider uh, making that a requirement if in fact it aligns with what wash dot typically does. And with regard to landscaping, I think it's really important that some temporary irrigation be part of that for uh, the viability of the landscaping. And it would be unusual that there's not some amount of space in order to provide some landscaping. Particularly if it's a requirement, they they do already have the power to take. And so you don't need much space to actually uh, provide some vegetation. And the way you construct the wall and where the property line is can be can be modified in your design, particularly given the height of the wall.
Colleagues, any other thoughts I, before I chime in? In this part, you know, something you said earlier, Steve, um, well, let's talk about drought drought resistant plants. If I recall correctly, thirty years ago, when the last time that southern portion of five twenty-two was was changed, uh, they put drought resistant plants in the median and they all died the first. And I think the city held them accountable for that to making sure that that was was taken care of. So I think it's these comments are, I think, are appropriate and everyone, I I know you agree with this. The other thing and the question of terracing and height, uh, as Mr. Frattoni was in your discussion with Mr. Frattoni. Your comment about town center process, the town center process, I think about, we use a lot of a human scale. And I wonder if there's a way we can incorporate that either into the design part of it or this of it's difficult to say it should be a certain height. I I certainly recognize that, but we all recognize something that's big and looming kind of. And so that human scale aspect of it seems like it might be appropriate to somehow intertwine in the mix here. Um, and the other thing from the design standpoint, again, some of this is going to be is is going to be down below, but not and not necessarily specifically in the ordinance part, but the terracing or tiering, if that's a correct way to to phrase it, should be encouraged. Uh, when we talk about should or shalls, um, I I think that that's another thing that I I don't hear anybody suggesting. We haven't heard comments of people saying that they don't necessarily like terracing or breaking up the space of wall. And I'm not sure where this fits in the mix, but from my standpoint, I think about if I'm walking along and I'm looking over, you know, is this wall, for example, human scale to me? It's maybe in the context of this wall over here it is. But if it was something a little bit lower or it was broken up through some trim or feature that would bring the scale down in my eyes, it could be helpful, particularly in a situation where you know, i- i- it it's going to be concrete. There's going to be a lot of asphalt and concrete and and trying to bring the scale down and the to a level that's more human oriented. Those are just my couple of comments. Anyone else here? And and the last thing I wanted to say just really quickly to keep in mind, folks, we're probably going to have one more touch on this in terms of timeframe. So if we can avoid sort of kicking the can down the road unless it's a technical item, let's let's try to get it. So that Mr. Bennett and Ms. Pratt have some clear direction from us if that is acceptable to everybody.
Tom, I have uh, some photos that I've asked if Matt has a chance to share of the green wall sort of and it dovetails very nicely into what you were talking about, but the human scale and the human sort of proportions. Uh, Matt, are you ready for that? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate for being able to do this on the fly. So if you wanted to sort of scroll through slowly, so these are systems. So that's a system that's holding that retaining wall back. You'll notice a fair amount of these have that human scale at the bottom, and those are your standard concrete, you know, rough face, concrete blocks at the bottom. So this is a very tall um, uh, retaining area. If you want to move down to the next option. Uh, so this one kind of you can see against the back where the houses are above, the road is below. That is a little deeper, so but it's just an idea of other places that have successfully used some form of green against roads. If you'd like to go to the next one, please, Matt. This is really, this is a more active and engaged, you know, where you it's a more traditional uh, installation of of the concrete blocks there. So it's not as unusual for someone to put in. And then one, I think I have two more, maybe. So this one really intrigued me. It's very steep and it's held back. It's but you can see there's sort of that human scale bottom base to it. And then you've got the green above and you can see the fence at the top because we know Soundtrager that just loves fences at the tops of things. Um, and then I think the last one there, um, again, this one is again, higher end treatment at the bottom, um, with the the slate kind of look. But it gives you an idea and these are systems that oftentimes have a lot going on behind it. You know, that that that's stabilizing it, but what you're seeing for the most part in most of these is uh, there's dirt behind it and not that hard concrete. And even the few that have concrete, they're the blocks that are shaped so that they don't um, do a strong reflection. They tend to break apart sound when it hits it rather than a concrete wall, especially with a concave concrete wall that will actually work as like a focusing of sound. So these sorts of systems, I think, are great. I just want to make sure that these are not in any way not allowed in our code, because I think this is when people think highway, green, they're looking for things like this, not the kinds of things that we see bordering highway ninety going up, you know, through Issaquah. It's like, this isn't highway ninety-three, it's quite a it's a great highway, which it's not that. And when I see these big concrete, even when they're beautifully stamped and even the ones that are in Kenmore and Bothell, they just scream, I'm a highway and not, I'm in your neighborhood. And so this is, again, this is my vision. I don't know how to make it happen. But I I'd like to show my, this is what I like to show my colleagues. This is my thoughts.
You can some riddle, uh, colleagues, just on point, any comments about customer riddles? Green walls.
If I may, yeah, um, so I just I'm very curious about the steepness of it and what actually is growing on it and how it stays there and doesn't slip off in a big rainstorm. So you know, that that's what kind of worries me about this. It's like, wow, I mean, how steep is that? I can't really you you know, because if if one of the things that I think the balance that I think we probably have to worry about here is that the more the as as the uh, the more vertical you are, the less taking there are. And and so, you know, so we want to try to to minimize the takings because these are our, these are our neighbors' homes here that we're talking about. But so I'm more intrigued if you go up a little bit by that one that is sort of terrorist.
Next one, right there.
Yeah, that. By that, because it seems like you could get the steepness, minimize the takings, but still get the green. So I don't, I don't, what what do you think?
Um, I, yeah, there there's links here to look at how they work. Um, I can share this with the council. I think, oh, maybe, yeah. Yeah, I think maybe not the whole council. I'll share this with the whole council. So I can't speak to each and everyone. I've not personally used any of these. So this is not coming from that personal experience, unfortunately. But um, some do require you to dig back and kind of do work behind it to stabilize, but then you infill it. It's so some of them are more invasive than others, but I I agree. I think this one is is a pretty decent intermediate option. But it's just something from what I've learned from working with um, an interior acquisition, which is very different from exterior, but if you, the more you have facets on a space, the the more the sound gets kind of dispersed rather than directed.
Colleagues, other thoughts on topic?
Mr. Lee. Um, I have built the first example. Um, we refer to it as a burrito wrap wall. There, um, if you go up that one there, it's a highly engineered wall that you have to go back. Um, and you basically take a geotextile. Now, you take a geostextile, you lay it out, you fill it with uh, soil and rock, and then you fold the geotextile back. And you do this over and over again. And so what you see there are the individual um, wraps, so the geotextile fabric. And then you can spray them or plant within the soils because what you do on the leading edge is you actually place soil for a a growing medium and then back is some structural fill. And so the wall is engineered as layers of material. Um, but all of the solutions require that you engineer back a certain distance. And so you end up basic, you end up, the wall is actually much deeper uh, as in terms of the area that you have to take. They're nice. It's uh, in where you have the area to do it and you can engineer it. It's actually less expensive.
Um, yeah, visually, I like these sort of green walls. Uh, my question for Director Bennett is would these sort of walls be allowed under the current draft of the ordinance?
No, I think you'd need to um, create, kind of go back to the format we have before where you have, this is the, you know, one option, the the one and two you have now. And then you would create, um, maybe alternatively third provision or fourth provision that says, you know, you you could do this in place of complying with the the one and two provision. So and that would be great to hear if council wants to see um, that that is an alternative. Uh, but you know, you're you're basically saying that, um, and I think it would be better to because you could have a picture like this and and say, this is, you know, as an alternative to one and two, you could you could do this and you wouldn't need to do the graphics. Um, but yeah, we want to really kind of nail down the the um, terminology that maybe um, our council architects could help out.
So I I guess kind of summarizing where I'm at, um, I I like these. If it meant a substantial delay in us getting this ordinance passed, I'm not sure I like them that much. But if it gets a quick amendment that we could get for our third touch, I would be on board with it. Fair enough. I just my my two cents were if the one of the the one that you and I both liked there that had the the terracing, you know, that one there. That appears and again, I'll I'll refer to my experts here. That looks like just standard or not necessarily standard, but CMU, it's like, I mean, it's like basically a stacked block that's backfilled. And from my from my standpoint, I want to make sure that we're not getting giving letting them take an easy way out. And that is going to be less desirable than a finished product that might be done if it was actually cast concrete or something like that, because that to me, I love the aesthetics if I unfocus my eyes, but it also reminds me of that giant CMU wall that they have up at Costco up up the top of the hill as you go up two hundred and fifth with nothing to. I mean, if all those plants are gone, that's what it looks like. So I'm going to leave it to the experts to know whether and which way we should go on this um, as an addition, but for what it's worth.
Yeah, I think I think the specific product is going to be challenging for us to to navigate if at this at this point, at this stage, I think that comes down to it, you know, the engineering and all that. But I think if we can get this in as an option, new option three, which is in lieu of one and two, in lieu of giant concrete and then plants climbing it, we could have this integrated composite green structure. I think the one thing that might be useful is the conversation about the sort of uh, human scale element, especially with this one, because a lot of times these are kind of built with a a base, a human scale base. And then that also provides us some protection of if a car kind of comes off the highway, it has something solid in concrete to hit and then the nice green wall would be above it, um, probably be more resilient, I maybe, and maybe I'm just imagining things, but that would be my thought. So I think a li- a few technical tweaks and I think we should do our best to try to get this in. And I think that's it, yeah.
Uh, just that most of these are engineered walls and they do take a certain amount of distance behind them to to be able to make that work. And so where you have, for example, you're not wanting to take up much area, you build a vertical wall. These these are engineered solutions. I mean, you could make an option there that says, you know, you can build a battered engineered soil wall. They're not going to do it, uh, because it would require too much area to too much expense to actually do it. You do it where you have the room and I and I've built them, but and they're just.
Please. I I don't see any downside to putting in an option three that sort of invites alternative treatments that would increase greenness, you know, greenness increase um green, how to say that, and uh, noise mitigation. And so so that if such a thing were possible and available and they could do it, they have the option to do it, but kind of not spending a lot of time on this, but more leaving it open for them to come with with an idea that then has to be looked at by the public works director and approved for use. Would that work?
Yeah, I don't think it'd be that hard to to add a a third, uh, uh, an alternative provision with a picture. And we uh, if it's, you think it will be okay to use that um, picture, Councilman Riddle, is that a public domain?
Those are public domain, found them on the internet pictures. Uh, you just
Yeah.
Use them however you're allowed to, but yes, you may.
We'll come up with something. Okay. The um the first change in the guidelines is on the second page of that that document. And um, so this is where the the guideline language changes to make landscaping mandatory uh, in the case of the uh, uh, a wall that's complying with provision one that uh, it'd be a concrete wall. It needs to have landscaping now, uh, uh, in this draft way it's written. Um, and then we're calling out that the plants have to be native uh, drought resistant species that do not require permanent irrigation. Um, and so then I've added um, some languages typical in in our southern gateway landscaping provisions. Um, and uh, the the percentage there is just um, a placeholder uh, that, you know, seem possible based on kind of the wall, the vegetation we see around us and other types of wa- walls that are similar to what we're showing here. It would be reachable, but it's also um, kind of couched in a should. So uh, this, you know, this would be you know, this is kind of starting from a place of, uh, we, you know, we don't want to, um, you know, create an enforcement issue. Uh, but it all, we want to set some expectations of what what we're looking for. You know, create an enforcement issue, uh, but it all, we want to set some expectations of what, what we're looking for. If they're gonna go this option. So now in some ways, um, you know, having that also creates a little more incentive. To do this new option we're talking about, because if you have a green wall that's totally set up to, you know, uh, and to, to be. Uh, always vegetated, uh, that may be an easier uh, thing to achieve. I, I don't know. That's just kind of off the top of my head. But so there's a, there's a couple of changes, a couple of things there that you could tweak. Which is the, is the should, is the shall, and is it thirty percent uh, for thirty six months? Uh, or do you wanna, you know, bring that uh, down or ta- or take it up? Um, you know, we uh, the kinds of things that are in the, the, the Southern Gateway Design Guidelines are, are much more. Uh, ambitious and they, they've created problems for, you know, because you know, it's been pretty easy for people who want. That's not eighty percent. Some of them are eighty percent coverage within three years and it's really hard to get to eighty percent. So that's, that's another reason, sort of went to the other end, but that, that's a buffer between residential and the, you know, the Southern Gateway, the new residential there. So uh, difficult to achieve. And then the other, other change was this um, nod towards trying to address uh, sound attenuation. And uh, that, that's on the last page of that document. Uh, and doesn't, doesn't get very specific. Well, in other case where you could change the shell to a should, step back a little bit. Um, or uh, you know, talk about it in terms of the idea that uh, the project shouldn't add to the noise. Uh, in, in, in the situation that it is occurring in. So um, but yeah, then, then I think, I think what I would suggest is uh, that the one we, the first vision we just talked about. The new one would, would be a new number three, and then whatever we have for sound attenuation just kind of applies to everything. So. Uh, questions?
Alex, I'd like to start with number three, because I think that's gonna be a little bit more tricky than the, than the other. Uh, so thoughts about sound attenuation? I really believe this is a critical component of this entire uh, system. Before I speak my piece, I'd love to. Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I, I think it should be shall when it comes to issues of addressing sound. And particularly where we have hard walls like this and the diffusion of it. I'm also fine with the thirty percent landscaping after three years. I think that's fairly doable. Means it's covered in ten years or shorter. I don't see it, but oftentimes these walls have some safety railing or some safety fence on top. Can we make some provision that if they do, that it's perhaps a black vinyl coated? Uh, rather than just a standard galvanized, so it helps to make it disappear.
We um, we're hesitating to, to get into specific uh, details like that. Because there, there could be, you know, ten years from now, a, another product that's, that's more, more durable. Or, or even, you know, uh, when we get final construction drawings for uh, the projects that are currently um, out there. So um, you know, I think, number one, the building code is gonna kick in. Uh, that it's gonna require of some kind of fence at the top. So I, I don't know if the council, I mean, I, it's certainly up to uh, you, you all. But uh, the, the question is, do you want to get that specific or do you want to add something um, specific that like to the provision? That I, in the ordinance, it says the Public Works Director shall be uh, authorized to require. You know, some of these things or safety fencing, but you know, do you, do you wanna really get, you know, specific to a type of product? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Alex, thoughts on point? This is what we call hard coding in my world. And Mr. Bennett has deflected us away from that a lot when it comes to some of these land use codes. Ms. Riddle.
I know that it would be a cost, but I think, how, how can we know that there, that the, system is gonna do this without having some sort of acoustical engineering sort of report or something? So I guess I'm wondering if this is a design requirement. Do we need to have a concurrent policy requirement to provide an acoustical engineering's report on impact? More specifically. Because I, I don't know how, if they came and said, yes, this works. I mean, we go through all this and builds it and it, it doesn't really impact. I, or it's worse. So I guess that's my question to my colleagues as well.
Mr. Ferratoni? Thank you. And uh, Matt, do you have that uh, thing I just sent you? Sorry, it, 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 it requires a uh, visual. There we go. All right. Thanks very much. Um, so um, you know, you're on city council when you start taking infrastructure pictures of other cities. This is, this is Tokyo and uh, I happen to see this uh, on a construction site. It, what the sign shows, it says in Japanese is the ambient sound in decibels on the left. And the uh, construction uh, sound uh, decibels on the right. And there's a municipal code apparently that says that you have to have these signs at these kinds of sites. And so I had a thought that it might be interesting to try to have uh, these signs installed on large retaining wall projects. Um, the, our attorney said that we can't have two different topics on the same bill, which is reasonable. But I'm thinking that, you know, to, to address your point about how do you know if it's working? This might be a way to basically let it be completely transparent that this is, you know, what we're hearing here, right? And to um, to Councilmember Lebo's point, um, I agree about the uh, um, keeping the look correct. Um, I'm a little hesitant about just giving the Public Works Director because we switch Public Works Directors, hopefully not really soon or anything. Um, and uh, you know, the interpretation may vary or does it vary very much from Public Works Director to the next?
Well, fence type, yeah, that could vary. I mean, so if you want, if you want, you know, vinyl coated chain link fence, then yeah, you can say it in the code.
Right, but if we leave it to the, the wording that you had, which is to say that the discretion of the Public Works Director. Is there sort of a, a generic thing that Public Works Directors think of when they think of what fits with the community?
Well, that's, that's where your, the guidelines could come in. You, you could give the applicant and the Public Works Director pictures of, of, you know, acceptable types of fences at the tops. Um, so you could have a picture of the vinyl coated chain link or you could have a picture of Trex type fence. Uh, what, you know, what um, they do, give them some options.
Thanks. Mr. Goldman. Um, yeah, so um, I'm very happy that you included the sound provision. Uh, I think it strikes a balance that we definitely wanted in there so that sound mitigation is not completely ignored. But I also think we shouldn't try to be too prescriptive and the amount of technical knowledge we would need to really have a lot of details. I think would slow the process down. So I think that strikes a balance. Also, it seems to me that the nature of this is someone's going to be applying for a permit to build the retaining wall. And so whoever is processing the permit would have to see that, oh, yep, you have considered sound attenuation. So it seems to me that there is sort of an enforcement in there that some city staff member would need to check. To make sure that they didn't just rubber stamp some sort of cell, that they actually had something to confirm that. So I think as is, I think it, it covers what we would like to cover.
Thank you, Councilmember Goldman, um, because that's, that uh, I, I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit. Uh, but could, because it sparked with me uh, something that I think um, we should ask for. And that is um, some documentation from sound transit as to, the, pretty much really what you were looking at there in Tokyo, the current uh, sound measurements. And um, within a certain timeframe after the completion of the project. You know, that, that they need to demonstrate that they've done their best. I, I'm not quite sure how to word this, Steve. Let me give it some thought uh, here and maybe I'll come back to you in a few minutes, but uh.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I think, you know, I can see something kind of coming just in, uh, you know, another sentence here where you'd say that uh, um, you know, you keep the shell, tell sound, sound attenuation should um, um, be considered in the design process. Um, at a minimum, you keep that and then say, and uh, the applicant shall ensure that the project does not significantly increase um, sound levels uh, after construction. So, so that you told the Public Works Director and the applicant, they've got to show um, you know, what the sound is now, what the sound is later. Uh, after it's constructed, so there has to be some sort of noise uh, report on, on what it is. So you can get more specific than that, but you, you put the process in motion um, by, by just saying that. Uh, without having to, you know, know what the ANSI standard, you know, for noise or whatever. Something, you know, the report is that I have to do now, if we, between now and the time you take this to council. I would take, take it to consideration of adoption, you, you know, we find some standard uh, that, that, that's not a huge change. That you can, you can just add, be specified that she'll comply with, you know, so and so's uh, noise reporting uh, standards.
Okay, thank you. That, that's very helpful. I, I just, my feeling is that a, a little, a little accountability is necessary in this particular circumstance.
Thank you, Philip. And I, and, and also thank you for disagreeing with Councilmember Goldman first. It softens the blow, Larry. No, I, 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 with respect, I, 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 I certainly appreciate the, the, the spirit of what you're saying. And, and your thoughts. I, I would like to see a little more accountability as well. And just partially because having seen what Washdaw has done in the past on this corridor in other areas. Uh, you know, we do know unequivocally, sound is, is an environmental hazard if it's too high. And, and it really does um, have a direct relationship to people's quality of life. If it's too noisy. There's all sorts of studies that show how, how dangerous that it can be. So I do, I would like to see this to be stronger without being overly burdensome. Um, but at the same time, I want to put the um, the burden on the applicant. To make sure that they're held accountable in this, in this regard. Because um, it, it is important. I mean, you know, the fact that Mercer Island gets to test out and Medina gets to test out quieter pavements and we don't. Says a lot about sound. And so I think that it's important for us to, to really kind of put it into a little bit more of a, of, of an equation kind of thing as much as we can without making it administratively impossible. So.
Councilmember.
Yeah, I think in, in the same vein, um, I think also, if they, if, I would like to see some sort of acoustical report or something or, or meeting an ANSI standard. I, I like before the construction, because once it's constructed, it's a little hard to come back and fix it. So I like the idea of having something in the application process that holds them accountable. And then afterwards, there's a validation of that. So my preference would be hitting it in both spots.
Just a quick, quick note, quick note for the public. Uh, Councilmember Vice Chair Casover brought to us a revision of the noise ordinance a number of years ago, which I piggybacked on about trucks and vehicle, heavy vehicles. And again, that's imperfect, but that was a place where we put a stake in the ground to say, we've got to be cautious about the noise levels in our community. Councilmember or Vice Chair Casover, excuse me.
Yes, um, thank you, Chair. Um, and thank you, um, Vicky for giving us this handout. Because there is some data here that has been collected. But as she points out, it's not been collected right where we're talking about with this wall. So maybe we can ask that, that the same studies that they did in other places along the corridor happen right where the wall is gonna be. The, the project area noise level, um, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing. But I think there's something use, there's some useful information here that we could draw on.
Mr. Goldman and then Mr. Lebo.
Uh, just a couple of things to think about. Um, if you put in a requirement that they have to come back and demonstrate that this wall doesn't have a certain sound. Um, level, you're gonna have a really hard time. Because it will be very difficult to say that now is it the wall that's causing it? And if the wall is causing it because the concrete is a harder surface than a vegetated or soiled area. Uh, the question is, what do you do with it? And we know that concrete is a harder surface than vegetated surfaces. Um, so I would caution against. Yes. A couple of reasons. One, they only represent, uh, right, they have different facets and they only represent a portion of the, of the area of the slope. Because much of it is sloped, uh, that doesn't have um, hard surfaces. But you, you may find yourself in this quandary of you require some sort of magic level that they're supposed to achieve after you've done. You're gonna have a difficult time. What are you gonna do with it? Um, and they're gonna be very um, how do I say, not very friendly towards that, because it's a very difficult thing to do to say that it can't exceed a certain DB level at a certain distance from the wall. Because they're not gonna be able to guarantee that that's gonna happen because it can be affected by a lot of things. The, including traffic. The other is that when you do sound studies, you typically don't measure the sound at, for example, the wall. Because that's not where people are. You measure it where people are, which could be the sidewalk across the street or in a person's backyard. And we all know that uh, the sound levels decrease based upon the distance you are from the source. So it's not typical to measure sound at the source. You measure it where it's received. So the only people that would be receiving it are the ones that are walking on the sidewalk on the other side of the street or they're standing at the bus stop. Uh, but they're considered transient rather than um, long term. So the sound levels that would be acceptable for a person standing next to a road would be a different consideration than if you're in your backyard. So I, I'm good with this. I would have a hard time if we put in a requirement that they had to measure a certain level of DB after the construction. And then do something with that.
Please, Larry. Um, yeah, first I'd like to thank my colleagues for disagreeing with me so collegially. I, I appreciate that. Um, I think we're actually in a very similar place that where I kind of was interpreting this to imply that the applicant would have to show that there will, that there's mitigation. Um, I totally, I think it's totally reasonable to have a sentence like the um, Director Bennett had, just saying explicitly. You have to kind of show that you did some sort of study when you were designing it. Um, I can also see the logic that we should kind of focus on the design part, not kind of retro, not after it's built. But um, yeah, I, I have no objection to putting like an, an explicit sentence, asking for them to demonstrate what they, what they've studied.
In issue of, of expediency here, folks, since we're, we're gonna have, we'll have another chance to take a look at this. We, maybe uh, we can draw on some subject matter experts to try to figure out some appropriate language and skills of, of Mr. Bennett. And, and Miss Pratt and see where we fall, uh, keeping in mind that as you and I talked about yesterday, Larry, we can't have the, uh, the perfect be the enemy of the very good because we have a time constraint here. Yes. Please.
Uh, there was one item that I was thinking about for these design guidelines. And um, how do we make it acceptable or even encourage to integrate art into an installation? I'm thinking like the roundabout at Fortieth Street. We, we're, we're hoping to get some art in the middle. But if there's going to be a, a retaining wall there, can it be part of that greater art installation? And that would probably make it a little bit more lenient as to what we might anticipate the retaining wall to be if it was somehow connected to and engaged with that art project. Is there a way that you could think about, that you would evaluate a project that came to you like that? Under this code and this guideline?
I mean, I, I think you're, you're um, suggesting something that would probably have its own process. Uh, that, you know, if, if you're gonna put public art into it, then um, you're probably gonna want to expand beyond the Public Works Director. To judge whether that's appropriate art. So do you want to inject that into this, this process? Or do you wanna, you know, kind of uh, establish that here's the look we're looking for? Um, now, I mean, it, in the case of a traffic circle, it, it, that's a city project. It makes great sense to, to, to do something like that. But I, I guess, you know, the question is, what's, what's the trade off of adding uh, another process to this? Uh, cause, cause uh, I don't think the Public Works Director is gonna be comfortable saying that's great art. You should have that.
I think it's, is it, yes. So the art, the art selection process is a whole other ballgame. But I guess I just wanna know, was there language in here that gives that flexibility? Like if they do something really unique that we don't have in here. Was there language in here that gives that flexibility? Like if they do something really unique that we don't have in here for us to be able to consider it?
I I don't think, um, yeah, this would stop them from doing something like that. The question is, you know, where are you going to to, uh, you know, create an incentive for them to do that? And and what what's entailed that? I think I'd like to hear from the full council.
We'll let them noodle maybe when we're back, but that one, I mostly just want to make sure it's not necessarily strictly prohibited. Because what if they wanted a blank wall but had a mural on it? So that was, that wouldn't be necessarily meeting these current design guidelines, because we wouldn't want them to build us a blank boring wall. But if the intent is to tie it in with an additional sort of project, it's risky, but.
Yeah, I Summer, I have to say it's great that you're thinking ahead, but I think you're thinking ahead a long way. I think it's going to be many months, if not some years, before the traffic circle is ready for real attention. And I would recommend that we postpone any thoughts on that for until closer to the time. Um, and that we just focus on the project that's immediately in front of us right now and make sure this ordinance does everything we want for this project on five twenty two. So, um, because as I conjectured last meeting, I don't think sound transit is going to wait very long before they start applying for permits.
Yeah, and thank you for your your thoughts there, Vice Chair Casover. And I certainly hear what you're saying, Samurai. I think that what I'm hearing Mr. Bennett say is that this would not, I don't believe that what we were looking at here would necessarily preclude us from saying, as long as we're not prohibiting precluding us as a community saying, hey, we'd like to have this great art installation as part of this project. You know, uh, that I I think I think we're okay there. And I and I do agree with my colleague here. We do have to keep our eye on the ball on this one, because it's going to be. And I completely agree with you when it comes to gateway kinds of things, roundabouts, whatever, right? That is a place that is absolutely critical for us to have aesthetically pleasing artwork or things like that. This is a lot bigger and we have to think about, I think, uh, it's actually enormous. Think about what, if there are opportunities there, you know, down the corridor potentially. Certainly, as long as we're not precluding it in our code, then then I think we're fine. Colleagues, any other thought on on customer riddle, please?
I I think if there's somebody wants to come in and present art as part of a solution, I think that would be wonderful. Um, so whether it's an option that's available to him, I'm fine with that. I would also like to say to the audience and our citizens that one good way to reduce the sound levels is to reduce the speed limit. And I certainly hope that our citizens come and support an ordinance that reduces the speed limit on Botha Way. I think that will be one good way to reduce the sound levels along Botha.
I think so, yeah. So I assume we're going to get back to on the twenty third is your next opportunity. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm going to have to, there we go. Now I can actually see that the the red point. So we haven't set a date for the council retreat, going to try to find something for that about time wise for that coming up very soon. As you may recall, because of the holiday coming up in two weeks, we will not have committee of the whole on President's Day, I believe. Um, and I'll send out a couple of dates in terms of a potential council dinner date, as well as a council retreat, which I think will be, uh, this year will be considered sort of a mini retreat. Um, I did receive from Councilmember Riddle and Councilmember Bodie, who who couldn't be with us today because she's traveling. Um, a couple of thoughts, and I will quickly just read off Councilmember Bodie's thoughts, just to get them into the record. Um, just too many emails just have come through here. Here we go. So Councilmember Bodie had said, this is not necessarily for the retreat. She wants early action on the sign ordinance, ordinance, an updated reasonable use exemption ordinance and residential parking permit program. This is more work plan, things that we'll be discussing as well. Retreat topics I like to recommend include. There's a typo here. Parkmaster planning timeline and elements, updated comp plan timeline and elements, and three BRT community engagement and communication by the city for transparency, including for the permit processes.
Boy, that went by fast. Could you just repeat that?
You bet. The last one? All of them. I apologize. Too much coffee today. Parkmaster planning timeline and elements. That's our first one. Updated comp plan timeline and elements. And the third one is BRT community engagement and communication by the city for transparency, including for permit processes. And I believe very strongly that uh, the top topic of community engagement is going to is going to rise to the top. Again, that was one of our top three last year. Um, but without getting into specifics right now, which we'll reserve for future meeting. And then Councilmember Riddle. Did you want me to just read off this real quick? The quick items are you? Go ahead. Close notes, we're going to run it. Thank you.
Yep, um, I really want to work with Seattle City Light and figure out how we can improve our power infrastructure. You're giving me nervous here. Kenmore did a big effort with PSC. Their effort included a lot of tree trimming too, so there's sort of a different, but they did improve their power retention during storms. They'd had a lot fewer outages than we did. So there's work that can be done. We just have to start engaging with City Light and and seeing what we can do. Uh, so that's one, it's big. Two is to really look at updating the tree code to reflect any of the climate action plans, recommendations that might come related to that and the tree boards recommendations. Um, but also to enhance it with more of an ecosystem approach um, that includes kind of that symbiotic understory, so that we're looking just a hair more holistically and we just keep growing in that, how all these things tie together. Um, and then I want to make noticeable progress on a park. Like, we have some ideas, we have some plans. I love the big master planning. I know we have to do that for the Lakefront Park. But, you know, Five Acre Woods is pretty far along and it's trail building. Can we get an art installation out there? Can we get their yoga platform done? Can we just make something tangible that the community can experience in a park? That's a small enough bite, we can do it in a year and not a big project that takes multiple years. Those are my three new ones, new ideas.
I always like, in any retreat, for the first thing to do is to look back at the previous retreat and see what we were thinking and what we've accomplished and what's still on the list. The second thing that I think we do need to make, pay some attention to is our governance manual. It is, it is really out of date. There are sections of it that that we don't even really use, that we're not in compliance with. So if if we're not using them and we're not in compliance with them, we ought to change them. Um, I've started on that process and will be glad to bring what I have and share it. And, um, I guess I'm pretty concerned about what's going to happen at the state legislature. So I'm thinking that we are going to have to really pay attention and take a good look at some of our ordinances, maybe including the town senate ordinance, if that uh, TOD bill goes through, we're going to have a lot of work to do.
Thank you very much, Philip. Very helpful. Mr. Goldman.
Yeah, thanks. And I'll I'll echo what I'm hearing from colleagues. I think three that I'd like to look at. One would be a healthy streets pilot, where we have the streets that are closed for pedestrian access only, like Seattle has done. Um, a second, and this would also kind of depend on what happens out of Olympia, but to take a look at our ADU ordinance. We did some ADU reforms last year and just to see how are they working, what's working well, what could be continued to be improved? And then a third would be looking at some sort of property tax levy and getting community engagement. Something, you know, might we do something like what Shoreline has with their five year plan? But make sure that we're from the ground, we have community engagement so that it does a lot better than than, you know, prop one failed badly. So getting community on board with levies and explaining our budget situation.
Just to follow up on Councilmember Goldman's comment, think of it as a community advisory financial stabilization plan. And that it really begins with community involvement and suggestions to look at our long term finances and get them engaged in consideration of what our expenditures and revenues are, so that they can help give us suggestions, but also help build that community involvement.
Tracy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And one of the advantages of going last is that everybody said a lot of things I was already going to say, so I could go down to the lower priority stuff on my list. Um, so I appreciate basically the comments about the physical health and about the governance manual. Those are two things that had been concerning me. For our part, um, yeah, working on the climate action plan, including, uh, starting with the low hanging fruit, like banning natural gas and multifamily and commercial construction, uh, working on our, so that's one. The second priority would be basically working on our bikeability, walkability plan. So that includes negotiating for the McKinnon Creek Trail to finally happen and or converting Perkins Way to a one way street and with a dedicated bikeway, walkway. And then my third priority is, um, uh, paying attention to the diversity that we have in this town. So in that, um, we had been talking about honoring Octavia Butler in some way. And also basically looking at removing the racial covenants in our chain of title documents.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Other thoughts, and I can chime in here to the benefit of going last, really truly last. Uh, actually, you all have covered so many of the things here. We're going, there's a lot here. Uh, and we have a very, very full schedule. Um, so the retreat is going to be a place where we're going to have to to prioritize and and but thematically, there's a lot of things here. The governance manual absolutely is something that we've been meaning, we've been talking about. Uh, I too have been accumulating all these different edits that that we need to put into place. And I think it may be, we'll have to figure out a way to move that forward and maybe tangentially a small, small group get together and 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 make that happen. The, uh, the question of housing, I I believe similarly, uh, the middle housing bills and as well as the the TOD aspects of some of the bills that are right now in the midst of uh, being discussed down in Olympia, we have to monitor that very, very carefully. I know the administration is doing it as well as our our lobbyists are. Um, and I I do appreciate the lens that you're talking about, looking at it through Philippa, you know, looking at these things and thinking about where do we need to pivot in terms of figuring out changes to our own code relative to, uh, depending on what happens down there. In addition to going down there and expressing our viewpoints, um, which will happen next month, I'm I'm assuming as well as on an ongoing basis. I appreciate what Mr. Lebo said about a community, uh, financial action plan. I really, I really believe convening a group of citizens, regardless of the question of what the outcome is, I think it's important to continue that theme of engagement that we we really worked on um, emphasizing last year, but because of the fact that we came out of the pandemic, sort of, um, and kind of bumped along there, there wasn't the opportunity to have the engagement that we that we really, I know you're all committed to. As I certainly am. So I'd like to see community engagement on a number of things, financial questions, as well as, uh, immediate community. Uh, in the immediate future, community engagement on what's going on with sound transit as well. Uh, I think that that's something that's absolutely critical. Um, and I recognize that sound transit is is going to be helping us to a certain degree, but we need it from our perspective. And, uh, let's see, I think that's pretty much where I am. But I mean, again, the climate action plan to implementation of that is critical. Uh, looking at the diversity in our community is essential and multimodal. And again, we already teed up, um, speed limits and traffic calming last year. We've got to continue that good work. And that is a great segue into healthy streets, uh, both Councilmember Riddle and Councilmember Goldman have been championing that, like Seattle's model, which I think is an outstanding one. Um, uh, and and also Mr. Fertani's comments about multimodal pedestrian and bicycle friendly access. That's something that we're going to be discussing on an ongoing basis. So these are really good things to think about. And then we'll be distilling them down is again into the the big, sort of the big themes. And then figuring out what where we have in terms, what we have in terms of the capacity, based upon the fact that you have the comp plan, we have pre-code revisions, we have a serious amount of code revisions that are coming as well. And and it goes without saying, you guys said, don't talk about that too much. So I'm I'm going to let you talk about speed limits, yes. Um, not that I remember wanting to talk about speed limits, but speed limits, I think, uh, too, um, is we're going to be a critical component of this year's discussions. So other thoughts? Well, customer riddle.
Just to, I guess, six, the, um, need for for community engagement. Um, I think we had a really good, uh, interest in at last year's retreat, but we just never quite were able to get it off the ground. I think there's still some concerns pandemic and stuff, but we're seeing people come back. We're seeing a need, we're seeing an engagement, we're seeing a willingness, I think, to bring in, um, you know, listening sessions and other methods to hear from our community that's outside the three minute uh, public comment and that maybe is less structured on topic, that just lets us listen to them in a really open and engaging way. I think we're all really excited about that, but it just wasn't the right time. And I think now this year is the right time, and I agree with my colleagues on that.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge, um, Vice Chair Casover's comment about reflecting back. How are things working? How is our ADU ordinance working? How, or you've actually said that, we'd said it earlier today. She actually said this at an early meeting. Sorry, I'm conflating meetings, Larry. My apologies. And I think that that is really important for us to do as part of the process. How is the tree ordinance going? How is the ADU ordinance? Are we encouraging the what we're look, what the community has asked us to codify? Um, and what are those metrics? So again, without overburdening staff or anything else, we can get some baseline, uh, you know, some basic understandings of whether it's successful, uh, whether it's a tree ordinance or whether it's the AD ordinance or whether it's, uh, you know, and hopefully soon to be determined, the speed limit, uh, changes that we're looking for. Um, because we did pivot with the tree ordinance a number of years ago and had to revise it. Um, because it it was was a first shot at it and it didn't work so great. Some ways it worked really well, but we had to uh, pivot and and revise it. And and since then, while it's not, if it's not perfect by any stretch of the imagination, it's a lot better than it was. And 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 a leader in the state, so that remains. Um, I also think about the plastics ordinance, so I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that as well. colleagues, thoughts? We're at seven thirty one. I I'm one minute over my allotted time here. You have to stand up, I know. You all right, please? Any other thoughts before we, uh, call it for the evening? The last thing I just wanted to say really quickly is, uh, two, uh, we are going to be talking about speed limits of traffic calming at the work session on Thursday. Just to let you know. Mr. Mayor, City Minister Hill? Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. And, uh, I won't use the gavel. We're adjourned. I won't use the gavel. We're adjourned.
Thanks for coming, you guys.
Thanks for having us. I think, yeah, that.